Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Millville Board of Selectmen meeting Monday, October 17, 2016. It's 7:02, and I officially call this meeting to order. Announcements?
I pledge allegiance-
Oh, I'm sorry.
You never forget that.
We have the Legion here. I'm sorry. Please join me in the honor of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we have several announcements. One is to actually help get the word out for a flu shot clinic that will be here at the Senior Center. We have put it on, placed it on our policeman boards, on our website, and we have also put it on Facebook. We are trying to make sure that seniors know that this will be held tomorrow, October 18th, from 9:00 to 11:00, and also 5:00 to 7:00. They were a little light on the 5:00 to 7:00 after talking with the Senior Center Director. And so anybody who's looking for a flu shot, it will be hosted here at the Senior Center. And it is a joint effort with the Sam and V and A Hospice and V and A Hospice providers. And the Board of Health, excuse me, our Millville Board of Health.
And they're free, the flu shots. Just bring an insurance card.
The second announcement we have is a Trash Responsible Summit, in which that is being held this Thursday, October 20th, from 10:30 noon to noon. It is an event that's being put on by the Blackstone Heritage Corridor. It's really looking at the 25 communities in the Blackstone Valley. It is open to both the public and to the communities that have been invited. It is to look at a joint way of thinking about responsible trash disposal. And with the whole bikeway coming in, there's, you know, concerns about how we're going to continue, I think, being able to keep our valley as pristine as possible. So that's going to be at the Singh Center in Northbridge from 10:30 to noon on October 20th. And anybody who's interested can contact the Heritage Corridor. And the third one is to announce, we just recently hired a new library director, and we are now looking for an assistant librarian, and that has been posted on both our board and also our website. And just anybody who's really interested and loves the library, I'd encourage you to apply. The applications are being accepted until October 26th. It's a limited position of about four hours a week. And I know that our new librarian is full of a lot of good positive energy and would love to have a good slate of candidates to interview for that. And that concludes our announcements.
Thank you. Minutes. We have three sets of minutes for approval night, September 19th, August 1st, and July 26th.
May I make a motion to approve the minutes from July 26th and from August 1st?
Hold on. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The 26th of September, you're going to have the table.
Twenty, the 19th?
No.
You mean the 19th?
I'll meet in 19th.
No, we can, we can vote because we have a quorum here. It would be the two, and then you would abstain. So we could vote on that.
Okay.
Because we have, it will still, it will be a two to one, two to one abstention. So it's still legal.
I can't vote on it at all.
Yep.
Right.
So I'll make the motion to accept September 19th meeting.
In favor?
As written.
Aye.
Aye.
Pose.
Abstain.
Abstain. Well, I suppose I just can't vote.
That's fine.
Departments and boards, Mr. Davis, I welcome you to speak about your appointments to the Finance Committee.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening.
And Board, Madam Town Administrator. A couple of weeks ago, I met with Erica Blake and Paul Oliette of the Finance Committee, and we interviewed Mrs. Blake for the position on the Finance Committee. Mrs. Blake is a very intelligent, knowledgeable, and experienced person. She has her master's degree in business administration. She has been dealing in finance for at least 10 years now, and works for a company as their accountant or on their budgets. So she is familiar with how a business works, and that's what we do in this town on the Finance Committee. It is a business. So I think she will be a great addition to the Finance Committee. As you're well aware of, it's very hard to find individuals who will volunteer to step forward for any position in the town. And I welcomed, welcomed her commitment and desire to serve our community. So therefore, after meeting with her and talking with her, I took it upon my authority to go ahead and appoint her as a member of the Finance Committee. I still have one position vacant. I'm still looking for somebody. So if any one of you or anyone in the room can twist some arms, talk to some people, I don't care if you threaten them. We need, we need another member on the Finance Committee.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Board of Registries.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have a letter that's in your packet that is from our town clerk and the existing registrars, and it is that they have actually voted to accept the resignation of Linda Bassett from the registrars. So first of all, I'd like to thank Linda for her service to the town of Millville. As you know, elections can be quite hectic depending on what type of election, and this election coming up seems to be proving to be quite busy already with early voting to the actual town clerk. But we have a vacancy. Because of that, the Board of Registries has nominated and has moved forward the name of Elaine Ethier to be the Democratic Party Registrar for the town of Millville, and that was to be effective immediately, and wanted the Board of Selectmen to also acknowledge and ratify that.
Motion to recognize the appointment? In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. And then we had, because there's been so much recent activity with the Cable Access Committee, we did ask Colleen Curas to be able to come to this evening, and she's not able. But we were going to ask one of our members of our distinct distinguished cable committee and our coordinator, but I'm hoping he can break away for a moment to come up and address some of the things that he's been working on despite all the challenges that we've been facing in town. And I appreciate, Tim, if you can come forward and apprise the Board of what you've been up to and how we're trying to, to make improvements as we go forward with being able to keep people informed as best possible under the circumstances. Thank you, Tim.
All right. So I'm Tim Lobanti. I'm the Cable Coordinator, Wentzway Fisher Street. So at the beginning of the summer, we all had to pull our computers out of town hall, but I didn't want to touch anything with the cable system because those are charter's lines. I don't want to disrupt anything in fiber lines. You can't get them dirty. Just let it stay there, and we'll figure it out. So when we all started getting back into business this, this September, I contacted Millville Elementary School and Charter to discuss the possibilities of moving the channels to the elementary school. Because when we renegotiated with Charter about five years ago, we had a line put in from the elementary school to the town halls so we can go live for town meetings. With that, we can also run the channels from there. So Dr. Hawey and everyone at MES, excuse me, was perfectly fine. Yeah, bring it over. So last Thursday, we got a U-Haul with the help of Chief. I need to give thanks out to him. He was that extra oomph we needed to get it into the, into the truck. And we got it installed up at, at the elementary school now. So today, I put on a couple bulletins, and I told Colleen to text me when she gets in tonight to let me know it's all going. And I also scheduled, I can finally now go into the server and put in new programs. But in the meantime, this summer, I started that Millville Cable Facebook page to, just so I can still get bulletins out there in case anyone needs to see those and put the meetings up. So what happened during transition with the, with getting this server up there, Channel 191, something happened. There's a video jack that comes out of the carousel computer. The carousel is what loops the bulletins. For some reason, we're not getting video out from that computer into the Channel 191 modulator that goes out to the head end to Charter. So I contacted, they're now ISG, the camera company, about ordering that piece. Maybe it's that. If not, then we're going to have to have them come out and fix the computer. But as of right now, but I can still play programs off Channel 191. We just can't run the bulletins. So right now, I'm just putting the bulletins now all on Channel 192, so that way they can all still go up and program.
It's good to hear we're up and running again.
Yeah, yeah. So there's now new stuff today. There's new stuff. So that's about it. I'll still just keep running the Facebook page, and I'll just let you know when Channel 191 is all set with the bulletins. And is there anything else you wanted to know?
You're doing a fine job. Thank you.
I think, you know, the situation you were in, trying to be creative and find other ways, you know, live streaming it, getting it out there, I think it's, you know, it's your effort differently, hasn't gone unnoticed.
Yep. Also, the other thing, because we can still go live at MES, I don't know if you guys, this is what Jesse and I were discussing, I don't know if you want to move, we also talked with Dr. Hawey and the custodians about if we wanted to move more meetings there. Because we still have the capability to go live from there, if you want to move Selectmen meetings there, they said that's absolutely fine. Just let them know, and they'll set it up. But if we keep going here, we won't have that live capability.
And the live is from the auditorium, correct?
Yeah. That's just a small idea.
Oh, I know.
Thanks, Tim.
But that's about it.
Do you need anything from us?
Nope. But, and while we're in there, I grabbed the mics and everything that's been locked up in there.
There you go.
So we have everything.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. You've done a great job, Tim.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is old business. This evening, we have Director Michael Feeney from the Bureau of Environmental Health to make the presentation and discuss his report.
Mr. Chairman, while they're just getting set up, just a reminder of why Mr. Feeney is before us and why it's old business. He's certainly not old, and has only known us for a brief period of time. But the time that he has, on a previous agenda, you had before you the fact that we were going to, while nobody was in the building, also look at the air quality. The chief, when he has had to go in with our structural engineers, we noticed that the air quality was really quite difficult to bear, and we were really concerned because we know the building has had a history of problematic air quality, especially with mold and respiratory aspects that really needed to be looked at. So Mr. Feeney was contacted, and he came out on two occasions, and now he's before us to actually render his report and his observations to you.
Welcome again, Mr. Feeney.
Thank you. What I'd like to do is just give you a little bit of background in what my program does, discuss the findings, and we have a series of different recommendations. I'll be happy to fill questions at any time during the presentation. Just to give you an idea, I work for the Department of Public Health. I'm the Director of their Indoor Air Quality Program. We do roughly about 100 public buildings a year all across the state of many different types, whether they be state office buildings, mostly schools, fire station police, town halls, waste, I've even done a water treatment plant over the years. And as of, I'm very darned close to doing about 100, excuse me, 1,000 buildings in my career across the state, and I've been doing this now for about 20 years. I took over the program in 96. And I work at, work for the Department of Public Health. We operate under Chapter 11, Section 5 of the law, which we advise government concerning locations and other sanitary conditions of public buildings. I do not regulate. I can't order anybody to do anything. Frankly, I don't want that power because this allows me to go and look at a building if there's a problem, to try to figure out what the problem is as opposed to telling you, order you to go fix it. And that's the, what I, the approach that we took here, because it is an interesting building, and I'll go into that in detail. When we look at a building, we look at three different things. Ventilation, we look for water damage, and we look for sources of environmental irritants. Now, one of the fallacies about indoor air quality is, is that the older the building, the worse the indoor air quality is. That is not necessarily true at all. It's all about the design and the maintenance of the building. The building on top was built in 1880s. It's a school that's in Western Mass. The building at the bottom is a school that was built in the 1980s, and that one had far worse problems because they decided to put a pool in it with wall-to-wall carpeting. So it's all relative. It's all about the design and the maintenance. And so things can go bad in buildings because of either poor design, poor capital maintenance, or what we call building occupancy-induced problems. So an example, if you're going to build a building with, with air intakes, are you quite sure that you would like to put the garage right above or below an air intake for the building? That you can't fix. So you have to figure out different ways and how to, might make, either spend a lot of money to fix it, or you have to figure out unique ways on how to get around the problem. Then there are issues of capital maintenance. I'm not talking about throwing out the trash and vacuuming the floors, but things such as, if there's a mechanical ventilation system, that they have to be maintained. In this case, a loose fan belt, which will cause noise, where people will shut the thing down because they can't hear or talk. And then there's things that are done inside the building that can cause problems. You know, how people, you know, people using different types of fragrance materials or such, or things are stored in the wrong place. But what I really hear is to talk about mold, because that's why it was called. Definitely, the building has a distinct mold odor in two different areas, and I'll go into that distinctly. But in order to grow mold, you have to have four different things present. You have to have the mold spores. Every building has mold spores in it. They come in on our clothes. Every time you open the door, they come in. You can't get rid of them. They have to have the right nutrients to grow. What they'll grow is on anything that contains carbon. So if it came from a plant, or if it was derived from petroleum, that's what it can grow on. So if you get rid of all the things in this room that contain carbon, you don't have a room left. You basically not even have the floor tile because it's all carbon-based. You have to have the right temperature. It has to grow about 45 degrees Fahrenheit. The last thing that you can control is water. It's when something gets wet and it stays wet for longer than 24 hours, that's when you can start to grow mold. So why is it occurring indoors? Either A, water is getting into a place through the building envelope, which is basically the windows, the roof, the foundation, into the building in a place where you don't want it to be, or something inside the building is getting wet because of either the, you know, the plumbing is leaking or such. It's a little bit of both happening here. And so things that generally don't grow mold, if you see, like, for instance, a hard plastic top floor, if you see something that, that's on it, usually that's contaminated with materials from the environment, like dust and debris. It's cleanable. So if you don't have carbon, and they're, and they're non-porous, you can clean them. So cement, cinder block, brick, floor tiles, hard plastics, so they're cleanable. Things that you cannot clean are things that are porous, that contain carbon, that once they get wet, they stay wet, then the only thing that you really can do is to throw them out. And there's a whole laundry list, as you can see, of these things. So as I found, the more I do this work, the more I realize I've become my mother. I'm telling people to throw stuff out or clean stuff. So here we have your building. And the thing that made this thing so difficult is, is that it's actually four different separate buildings. The original building was built in 1850 as the Longfellow School, which is the northwest corner of the building. What I did not realize is that the area where the roof collapsed was actually an addition. Sometime that was added, some, I'm placing it 1880s, 1890s because of the tin, tin ceiling. That was attached to the front of it. Then you have an addition to the back where there's a boiler with the flat roof, and then at some time, there was an elevator added. I guess the 90s, if that was correct, was added to the back for, for access to the building. That is the source of your mold inside of the, of the original building and the addition. That is a, what we would call a cellar that's underneath the building, that's dirt floor that's used for storage. And as you can see, there's all sorts of different materials in there that are plastic, cardboard, all the different things that you can grow, that you can readily grow mold on if it's wet, as well as the soil. The problem is, is that that's the door that's sealing the cellar in. That looks like it would be something that you would see on the outside of a shed. That was enclosed when they built the elevator shaft inside the building. So right now, what happens is your cellar has no place for air to vent on. Many times, this type of, type of building will have any passive vents on the side, which will allow for air to get in, to help for air to both sweep underneath the building, to help remove moisture and to help dry it out. This particular space is entirely sealed on all sides. So if moisture gets in, it stays in there, it has no place to go, and things in that space become wet. Once they become wet, the odor then, because of the way the elevator shaft is, is placed, it serves almost like a chimney. So as the elevator shaft gets heated up, it starts to pull air from its base. This is what's at its base, so that as air gets pulled out of there into the elevator shaft, up the elevator shaft, and now has access to the first floor and the second Now, why is it getting wet? It's because the foundation around the outside of the building is getting wet, and water is being directed towards it. Here we have, that's a stone path that's built towards the front of the building that actually looks like it's there for drainage of the parking lot. So that is now pushing water to the foundation where this, this is. This front lawn is where it empties. Also, it empties on this front lawn is the roof, because the drains actually dump onto the space. So water will tend to move down this space towards the walkway. There's actually somewhere in the picture, just in the edge of the shadow, there is a pipe that's about the size of a softball that will allow for water to go through it once this fills up, then come down this hill, past this area here, and where that window is, is the EOC in the building, where there's another source of water and moisture. And if you look at this pathway, is this, is this a laser pointer?
Yeah, it should be.
Okay. Oh. That just turned on. Ah, there we go. Okay. So here's your front, there's your walkway, so the water travels this. See this area here? That is the path of the water that you're seeing coming off the building. And so you can see what's right in the middle of it is this foundation wall. Foundation walls are not watertight. What this, what this building is sitting on top of is field stone that's basically cemented in. Water, from what I understand, readily comes in through the foundation in the, here, it's been described to me as a river or a stream that's intermittent. Here's a picture. That's the other front corner, so you can see the downspouts are dropping here. There's also cracks and spaces along the foundation. So if you have water concentrated on that side, water's going to go through those spaces and into the crawl space underneath the building behind that wooden door in, in the elevator shaft. That flooring, that's your EOC, that's the flooring that's there. Now, that typical type of flooring, it's, it's basically a laminate that is attached to planks that are made out of basically particle board, okay, that are inter, intergrooved so that they fit together like a puzzle. And the problem with this type of, of floor is that originally, when this was built in, as it was described to me, is that there were wooden planks that this was placed upon. Now, any sort of old-style buildings, it was real wood. It's usually about this thick, that could survive things, exposure to moisture. This type of air, when the building was built, I would almost guess was not used for occupancy. It was actually storage of some sort. No, was it occupied from 1850?
The back corner was the nurse's office.
Right.
This door here was the principal's office. The teacher's table was on the left-hand side where they ate lunch. The speech room was off to the side, and the secretary's desk was right there in the middle.
The thing is-
And that was 1980s.
That was 1980s?
Yep.
When it was designed, I will guarantee you, no one was in that space that was occupied.
Okay.
See, it was converted at some time for other use.
All right.
Because a lot of times, these lower floor areas, this building, when it was built, it was before furnaces. The whole building was probably heated with pot-billy stove and/or, and/or fireplaces, would be my guess. Then when that, this could have been at, when it was put in, that could have been the original furnace room, there had to have been a coal chute somewhere, because that's how they would have heated it back in the 1880s. Now it's a, it's a oil gas, I forget. Oil, oil burn. So the problem with this thing, this type of floor, is that it does not breathe at all. It does not let moisture out of it. So I always get this. All right. There we go. So what that is, is a moisture meter. This type of flooring cannot take moisture exposure because it's not made out of hardwood. It's basically made out of an engineered wood that, once it starts to get wet, and if it stays wet for, for an extended period of time, it will start to grow mold. And what I'm seeing here is that the center of the floor, since it's all locked-in grooved material, it basically serves as almost like a plastic bag. So the moisture stays there. So the moisture that's underneath this floor wants to get out, and so the only places it has to go are essentially the edges. Now, that's, this thing should have zero, that number, number on that moisture meter reads 22 percent. Now, I did this measurement three days after the last major, major rainstorm, and it's, so that means it's been wet for 72 hours. The previous time that I had come and I did moisture sampling, it was wet, and it had not been raining for six days before I did that. So this is telling me that this floor is constantly wet. And in order to make it breathable, there is a dehumidifier down there that's running constantly. The problem with the dehumidifier is, is that if you have a high concentration of moisture in one place, and the dehumidifier who's trying to get rid of all that moisture in another place, it's going to start to draw the moisture from where it's wet to where it's dry. So you're having this constantly exposed to moisture. And that is also what was installed down here, was gypsum wallboard or drywall. And what's unusual is that this is actually a line that I put in here using, using the computer program. This wall is warped of drywall. I've never seen warped drywall before. This stuff should be straight, and it should not be moist. Now, I did measurements in this, there was no moisture in it, but seeing something like that tells me it is going to be moist, and it's going to be moist for a long, for an extended period of time. You can't see anything on the outside of it looking water damaged, but what I would be worried about is what's underneath and behind it, and what's on the underside. Because clearly, you walk into the space, and it smells musty. So what's happening is, is that there's no place for the water underneath this floor to go, and I'm, what I'm thinking is, is that this floor is going to be, if you look at it from the underneath, it's going to be heavily involved with mold. So there's other things about this building that are interesting in that, as I was going through, because when I go look for water, for, for issues with regarding odors that are related to mold, I always start to look at structure to see if there's holes, cracks, or spaces and things like that that could be explaining the situation. This is one of the stairwells. You can see that the stairwell is leaning this way, so it's tilting, which is a little bit, see that in old houses. bit, see that in old houses? That is the door that's leading to the room where the tin roof had collapsed. That floor, that space should be even. It's at an angle, so that's telling me the floor is doing something. And this is what was of concern for me, because when I looked at, this is the elevator extension here. Now, see this white line? I added that. You can see pieces of the roof sticking over that straight line. The elevator roof on this wing is starting to bow. This is, I'm assuming, this is modern construction using steel that's attached to the original building. And then at the back, where this is where that stairwell was, that's angled, you can see that this brick is starting to crumble. Now, that usually means one of one or two things. Either A, there's a lot of moisture getting into it, but it doesn't look like it's forming the types of salt deposits that you would expect. The other thing that causes that is because the wall is basically holding up itself by its weight itself, the brick. When you start to see brick crushing, that tells me that the weight has been shifted onto the brick in some way, shape, or form. So I'll have to go to, and how do I get to, I took a couple of different films, how do I get to the film here? Because what I ended up doing-
Do you want a video clip?
Yeah, please. And so I did something rather, so I just-
You can start first.
Okay. What I did was something very simple, and that was, instead of getting a level, I basically asked for a golf ball. And so that's, I took another ball. This is a view in the middle of the hallway, looking towards the kitchen on the first floor. And you can see, I'm not putting any energy into these balls, they're rolling by themselves. Floors like this should be level. Now, this is another, this is the floor for the elevator shaft on the second floor. And as you can see, they're picking up speed, going towards the front door, and then they take a right-hand turn. Going towards your elevator. Okay, this is going from the 1850s building towards the front stairs. I think the next one is the same one. So it's picking up a different angle. And so this should, with all that floor like that, that should be new construction, that should be level. That's going from the meeting room towards the stairwell on the first floor, and you can notice the angle on the door. Okay, that should be level. This is the kitchen, first floor. And it rolls back, so that tells me it's a dip. And on the other side of that wall is your bathroom, which has a lot of weight in it with all the plumbing. This is the second floor. I think the last one is that top floor, and no matter what, oh, there we go. And this is rolling towards the elevator shaft. And that's it. So what this all tells me is this. From current slide, there we go. Is that, from all appearances, here's your original building. Now, this building is built on top of stone, okay? It was, I call in the report, living rock, which is basically stone that's still attached to the soil. This is stable. What's happening, that's your boiler room area, that's moving away from the building in this direction, and your elevator seems to be sinking towards this direction, which is creating a lot of stress and torque in that area. This isn't, and so when I, I know that this is the area that collapsed, this is all in areas outside of your engineer's report of this building. So this is actually the, in the room that had the studs put in to try to support the tin roof. That one's flush. What this bolt over here on the left tells me is that that type of construction usually is attached to the roof. Thing is, is that in this space, this is a Mortise and Tenon design, this is moved. This should be against this, and this should be in here on a peg. Since this was installed, see how it's kind of angled? Another Mortise and Tenon, this should have been up here, that's why they put this in, that's what it looks like. Problem is, is that three out of the four of these have moved. There's only one that's flush. So the other part of the building that's interesting and odd, and what took me, this is the addition from the 1880s, this is your original building. When they built in parts of the building to support this brick, what they would put in are stone lintels to support the weight, so that as the brick wants to push down, it's transferred over. At some point, I don't know when, the building was, had a ventilation system added to it. And what was done was these vents were put in, there's no support. If there is a support, there would have, I've seen places where it was steel, other places, I don't know where the load is going on this. But what they did at the front of the building, that I can't explain, is they cut through this part here, and that's above it. So there is, so based on this, there are a couple of different recommendations, and what we do is we make short-term recommendations and long-term recommendations. In this case, how to get rid of the mold odor is the short-term recommendations, and that's going to be looking at the cellar space and cleaning out what's underneath it, seeing if you can extend the downspouts at least five feet away to prevent water from being against the foundation. The cellar door has to be made airtight in some way, shape, or form, because right now, whatever's in that space is now coming into the hallway, causing that problem. So if you clean that out, get the water out, and get the materials out of it, that should help. Thing is, is that that space has no place for the air to go, as well as the EOC floor. So what I've suggested in previous buildings is, is that an exhaust vent be put to vent the crawl space, the cellar, as well as to vent the space underneath the floor. That way, you can give the moisture a place to go. In the front of the building, it looks like there's the remains of what was exhaust for killed. That's where this thing could go, and you'd have to run it basically as long as the building is occupied to depressurize the space, because if you run that, that will pull air down from the EOC into the space, it'll also pull air from the elevator lobby into the crawl space and hopefully vent the odors. And then, once you do that with the EOC, I really think you need to look at the floor as to what would be more appropriate for that area, if you want, if you're going to continue to use as an EOC, and replace water-damaged materials down in that space, because obviously they have been. The other thing is that I would suggest that the joints between the bubble plugs be reassessed to see whether or not the roof is still moving or not. I know the engineer's report, we agree with what they say in that, and basically, I think they're saying the same thing, is that we, they're seeing movement as well. So for long term, we recommend that some sort of drainage system be put in to redirect the parking lot runoff, and that the rest of it has to do with making recommendations to have the rest of the building evaluated. Because what you got is a building that was built at four different iterations with four different types of materials that are moving in two different directions. That's what concerns me. So that what could be going on with the newer additions is because they're moving, that can cause more cracks and spaces to open up in different places that aren't related to the roof collapse. And that is, in and of itself, going to be something that will be a long-term solution, because I find it very concerning that you have new material, new construction that's moving. That should be flat, it should be flush, it should be straight, it shouldn't be leaning the way that I saw it. So there are a number of different things with regard to settling of the different parts of the building, such as the sagging rear stairwell, addressing the brickwork at the back of the building, and to basically make recommendations for arresting movement in the elevator room and the boiler room, so that you can stabilize the building. So that's what's in the report. It's a little bit more detailed, I tried to give you the, give you the abridged version. That's who I am, that's my phone number. If you want further information about indoor quality or things of that nature, we're on the internet, so just look for indoor air quality and public health. So with that, did I answer things so thoroughly that you don't have any questions?
Is there any sense approaching these remedial actions to try to occupy the building again?
Well, from a, if you're asking me from a health standpoint, from a health standpoint, if you are able to get the short-term recommendations that I made with regard to mold and taking materials out of the building that are there, that will help. The EOC, I think, has its own set of problems in and of itself, because it has a material that was put as a flooring that, in general, people who make this type of material recommend that you do not use it if you have a sump pump or if you have a floor drain. You have neither. What you basically have is a floor that's overrunning water. Now, I've seen this type of situation in old buildings. The problem is, is that if you know that there's water there, and you know it's always going to be there, my recommendation is, if it's too difficult to remediate, don't use a material that's going to grow mold. That's what you have here. So you're going to have to make a choice, a choice here. And so that's why I'm suggesting that some sort of subfloor exhaust vent system to reverse the pressurization, because what's happening is heater wants to rise, so just the lights in the EOC are going to create an upward air movement in the EOC that's going to want to draw that air from downstairs, down underneath the floor. So if you give the odor and moisture another pathway to get out, which would be a motorized, that would be, that would be the way to go. I don't think you can go and put a pipe in there and expect it to work, and I think it needs to be motorized. And we've done this before with crawl spaces that have no gutter downspouts, and that way it gets, because that room also has a disadvantage in that it does not have a ventilation system. So you can't turn something on to pressurize it to try to push the air down. And so that's why, if you don't have something to push it in, then you try to pull it out. The rest of what I saw are stuff, conditions that can affect things as they go along. And after seeing the engineer's report, which was very thorough, your building confused me, because it has two different types of roofs, and what the building, engineer's report told me is, is that the original 1850 building has a gabled roof, and the front of the building has what's called a hip roof. I was trying to figure out what happened to the other gabled roof. It's actually sealed inside the ceiling itself, inside the attic space. So there's a lot of stability in that. But when you start adding stuff, and you're not quite sure what the footing is, that's when you start to have this type of issue. This is something that is not, I'll use, this will be a double negative, this is not atypical of old-town buildings, because I've seen this before many times, unfortunately.
Just design?
It's a little bit of design, it's a little bit of location. I mean, the groundwater in the area wants to go towards the Blackstone River, and the building just happens to be kind of located on a slope that's in between uphill and the Blackstone River. So everything, as you can see, just wants to head towards the playground, it seems. So it's, unfortunately, water always wins. So you try to give it a place to go, and instead of trying to fight it. And that's, that's what I think we're suggesting at this point, redirecting water away from the EOC, maybe that will help with the drainage underneath it. But, but a number of different capital projects that you'd be looking at to try to arrest something like that. So that's why, get in, talk to an engineer.
I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
You did an analysis on the basement and found mold.
Yes.
How about the first floor?
Not on the first floor, not on the second floor.
Okay.
Okay, I did not do an, I did not do an analysis. We don't do mold testing, and we don't recommend it, because there are no government standards that establish exposure levels to mold.
Okay, you do a moisture tester on all three floors?
I do the moisture test, but what's more important is that the best mold tester I have is actually the front of my face, because once you smell the odor and you start to look, you can, there's a couple of different rules that are always, always are in place. One is, is that basements and cellars, dirt floors are always wet. They always will be wet. And so for me, it was looking for the pathway.
Right.
And so, so it wasn't, it wasn't the fact that the cellar was moldy, it was the pathway of the cellar being enclosed by the elevator with the elevator shaft. The other pathway is the stairwell that goes from where the elevator shaft in the basement goes up to the first floor, where that door has the large space underneath it. So you get to the top of that, it smells tremendously moldy. You get to the elevator shaft, around the elevator shaft, it smells tremendously moldy. Once you get further into the building, it doesn't.
Okay.
So it's the pathway.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to say one thing, when Mr. Feeney did come out, and he came out on two occasions, one of the things that I recognized by his lines of inquiry is that he was really looking at the structure of the building to figure out, you know, was there something that would be a more, a quick fix versus what he's been showing us tonight? And obviously, the building envelope has a lot of serious concerns, which is something I think ourselves have been looking at, and will definitely have to take into advisement, because I was hoping for a more quick fix going forward, since the problem has been, an ongoing problem for the Town Hall. And this summer was just oppressive in there, nobody was in there, except when the chief had to enter into the building, he was almost like knocked out by the smell, and even more recently, again. So we know that there's a problem. So I want to thank him for coming out and spending two days really looking over the building and telling us his observations. Thank you, Michael.
It was a thorough analysis.
Well, thank you.
We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ready? Good evening, everybody. It's been a while since I've been here. Jackie Lee Ma, 33, Allard Court. I just wanted to come in front of the board today. I've been dealing for the past week or so with a personal issue at my residence that's crossing a few boards, a few departments at Town Hall, and I found myself today very frustrated with the different departments that I'm trying to work with. And I just wanted, I don't want to get into the details of the situation, but I wanted to make the board aware of a few obstacles that I've faced last week and this week. First of all, can anybody tell me where meetings and agendas are being posted? I know that they used to be posted in Town Hall outside the clerk's office, but obviously, I understand, and that's another thing, too. I completely understand that everybody's doing the best they can, but as Mr. Davis very nicely pointed out, this is a business, and we need to operate like a business. So I was just wondering, do we know, can somebody tell me where the postings are?
I can. They're on the outside board, the large bulletin board outside in the upper parking lot.
Okay.
There was a large bulletin board put there a few years back.
Yep.
So they're being posted there, and also on the website. If you go into the calendar, it has the meeting agendas.
For Board of Selectmen, not for other town boards.
Right. But you don't, when we had this issue, and we're worried about where we were going to post, traditionally, not every board that would send an agenda to the clerks would always-
would always be posted on the website, but by law, we have to have it in a visible place during regular hours, 24 hours, if it is available, is the most optimum, but it has to be accessible to the public when the Town Hall is operational. Since we're not in the Town Hall, when we checked with the secretary's office and the AG's office, the outside building posting notice board is where they recommended that we do that, and so that's where that has been. So, that's really the one place that they have to do, and that the additional part of trying to put it on the website is just an additional thing, but it's not required. But we try to do the best we can, depending on when the clerk receives it and whether the agenda itself is being requested to be put on there.
As the chairman of boards, a board in town, I can tell you that meetings are not being always posted out there. So, on the outside board. So, that we should maybe touch base with the town clerk, because I know that that is not happening.
If a board, the agenda or the meeting date itself, you're saying, so you're saying...
The meeting date.
Because the town clerk, for those people who had pre-established meeting dates, those dates are already posted out there?
Correct.
But you're saying an actual agenda is not being posted?
I'm also saying that if I email in a request to post a meeting, it was not put out on the board.
Okay, thank you.
So, I'm having a hard time tracking down what boards are meeting at what time, because it's not clear on the website for each individual board, and I know it's not accurately reflected always outside. I think you're right, standing meetings, first and third Monday, that schedule is out there, but as other boards have, planning board, conservation committee, as other boards post a meeting, I don't think it's making it out on that public board.
And actually, with the new, was it this past year, last year, the agendas have to be posted, the actual agenda, not the meeting date, you just can't say we're having a meeting date. The actual agenda, with the new posting rules that we had, has to be posted in public.
Right.
Because I've had this issue with another board, that it just says they're meeting, and I've actually had to email and say, could you please send me the agenda? And I'm getting it a day before, because it's not, and that has nothing to do with Millville, that's another place. But, it is a mass law with the new standard of posting meetings.
The other thing I would request in this situation, under these circumstances, is if a location could be added to that. So again, I think we've taken a lot of the signs that were out on the Cork Board that said first and third Monday, and put it outside, but if, I don't know that this board is meeting at the senior center, it doesn't clearly state that on the postings outside. So, other boards are meeting at the library, at the senior center, I might post one at my house. I mean, without a location, you might as well not even post it, because people can't come.
I do know the town clerk takes that very serious, along with her assistant. They're always posting up there, whether it's raining or windy or anything, we've been going up. And myself, I've made sure of that, if something comes in, in the off-hours, when they're not there, to make sure that it gets up. So if there's something where you're telling us that you've sent something and you still didn't see it there, that's concerning to me. Did you ever bring it up to the clerk's office at all, or no?
I still have two outstanding voicemails from her that she's yet to return. I went in to see if somebody had been sworn in, so they could sit in a voting meeting with me two weeks ago, after emailing four times and being told, I don't know where the records are, I don't know where the location is. I stopped in the Sallyport two weeks ago, right before we had a meeting, she went over to a shelf, took off a binder, and it was the first piece of paper in the binder, and said, oh, here it is, you're all set, she can vote at tonight's meeting.
Yeah, and actually, I remember sending that along.
So, that was after two unanswered voicemails, and four emails I had to physically go down. And again, I got the runaround about how, you know, records and we don't have at home right now, and I understand that and I respect that, but why did it take me to physically go down and watch her pull a binder off the shelf and then giggle about the first page in the binder being the certificate of the person being sworn in for my meeting? I mean, that's frustrating, and I know Town Clerk doesn't report to you, so that actually wasn't what I was here for. I'm just asking about the postings in general should have a location, and I think that if push comes to shove and there ends up being an open meeting violation, I just wanted to address it with the board, that the locations are not on all of those meeting postings, and I know not all of the postings are going up. In my specific instance, the next instance that I had starting last week was, I'm trying to get ahold of a couple of departments, and I said, God forbid, somebody check the phone lines going into Town Hall, they're going to think I'm obsessively stalking you people. The number of phone lines that I've called Thursday between the hours of nine to one, and then this morning, starting about eight-thirty, trying to find out what times people are going to be there, what offices. Jen, I called your line, 508-883-1186, and there's a generic Verizon person who answers and says, you've reached a Verizon mailbox. Beep! I don't know whose Verizon mailbox that is.
And I called you to tell you that.
I did speak with you, yeah.
I was thankful that you told me that, because we have had a message on that, and I'm wondering if there's been something that has happened, because in the interim, all of a sudden, that message, and people have been leaving messages, and I know you didn't leave me a message, and I wound up tracking you down, and I'm thankful for that, but I'm also, I'm trying to figure out, in touch base with Verizon people, to find out why that has occurred, because I absolutely know there has been a message there.
There wasn't Thursday, and there isn't today.
Right, well, no, now there is, again, because I went back, but it can happen where the system can default to, and I don't know why that is, but not being able to know that, and now knowing that, I need to be able to check all of everybody's, because they may be just under the assumption, just like they've always had it, that it's there, and unless you're really listening to it, you won't know that for some reason it's defaulted to that particular type of thing. But, I can assure you, not only did I do it, but also Helen had done it before for that, so, and I made it as a changed one when we moved over.
I mean, the other thing is, almost every, from what I understand, all of the phone numbers that are listed on the website for various departments, so there's one line to call the building inspector, the electrical inspector, and the highway surveyor. That line rings in a vacant Town Hall building, and then people have to manually call in and listen to the voicemails during the day. So, first of all, I think, as a business, that's just kind of ridiculous with the technology that there is. I mean, Tim can run a cable operation and figure this out, I mean, there has to be a better way, since this operation has been shut down for several months, and it doesn't look like it's getting back in the building anytime soon, there has to be a better solution to that. That's not acceptable. And even if it does need to ring into a vacant building, somebody needs to be checking voicemails more often than Thursday to Monday, till I post something on Facebook and Jen responds. I mean, it's not, I don't think that that's an okay business practice.
They're not checking them every day? Somebody?
I think that's, I think that's an issue that Jen's going to have to take up with the employees.
I'm hearing about it this afternoon for the first time, so I just ask, as an administrator, if I need to actually connect with people as a practice and policy. I know that I do, I know that, you know, that's why I knew that I didn't have a call, but then was looking at, because I log every call that comes in that doesn't even leave a message, so that I can actually go back, and on that day, today, I could see that that was...
Yeah, but I called your number too on Thursday, I even called your number Friday, because I was like, oh, she's probably in.
I know, but without, but without any message, what I do is I...
Right, because I'm not looking for you.
Right.
You play a role in this town, and your role is way more higher than chasing everybody else and listening to five other departments' voicemails, you have way more important things on your plate than to be trying to track me down.
And I appreciate you saying that, but I want to help, you know, so I appreciate that.
So then there needs to be, you know, I'm just addressing it with the board, because it's not your job to call me back about different boards that I'm trying to get in touch with.
Regardless of the situation, clearly, we have to do a better job.
Yeah.
Yeah, and unfortunately, we had looked at trying to relocate the lines, and it was very cost prohibitive until we make that next leap, and I don't know if you've been paying attention, but tonight, we're actually going to hopefully sign a license to be able to do that, but I did have the Verizon people in, and it's this whole network of not being set up even in the police department for doing that, and so, but I mean, there's no reason people can't get their messages.
It would be more financial beneficial for just turn off all the phone lines in Town Hall, have one line in the police station, and have somebody answer that dedicated line and take, I mean, get a cellphone for crying out loud, and just plaster the cellphone number on the website for every board and committee, then people can get in touch with you.
But other people are not having that same issue, so I think it is a matter of making sure that people are doing...
I think other people are, they're just not as vocal as me. I would have to imagine that I'm not the first person to call Town Hall. Like I said, this happened to me a couple months ago with the town clerk.
Yeah.
And I still haven't gotten a call back from two voicemails.
Jackie, I didn't mean that you, and I would just want to go back, I didn't mean that you haven't, I'm saying that there are other staff, I think, that are rigorous about doing that, because when you're not in front and see the phone blinking, you have to make it a practice, and you know, to be doing it several times during the course of the day. I do know that the clerk was away, and I want to make sure that, looking back, you know, that's a whole nother issue, that if that's the case, we do have an assistant who should be doing that same thing, so I thank you for that.
Yeah, you know, and it is, it seems like it was a, you know, series of unfortunate events, that everything happened all at the same time, but the other thing that, you know, got brought to me today, and this will be the last thing that I say, but after speaking with the clerk who called me after business hours, which I appreciate, Jen called me after business hours, I get it, but you know, both Jen and the person that I spoke with said, oh, we were in a two-hour staff meeting today, so we were all tied up, the entire department, or the entire staff, I think she said, was in a very long two-hour staff meeting today. And I have to stop and think, for a business who's only open four hours a day, to tie up all of your staff who's supposed to be available to the public, this is a public service enterprise here that we're operating, right? For them to have office hours for only four hours a day, and for two of those hours to not be available 50% of the time, to me, just isn't acceptable.
Did it happen to be last Thursday?
That was today, I was told. Two-hour staff meeting today, on a Monday, you know, our business was down for a few...
I don't know who said it was two hours, it wasn't two hours, because...
You told me an extended, and the person that I spoke with said, we were tied up for two hours.
Well, it wasn't two hours. Might have felt like that, because of the stuff we were going over, we were going over some stuff.
So even an hour, you know, you were down 25% of your time, that the office is supposed to be open to the public, it's reduced hours as it is, and then to take, to take one hour away from when you're supposed to be servicing the public is really tough.
And I want to say, nobody was not serviced, actually, during that meeting, we did service people that came in.
Nobody answered my phone call.
Right, okay, you know, but that can happen.
And it sure did.
You know, and I apologize for that, but...
So, I mean, again, I'm not looking for a resolve, I just wanted to make the board aware.
Are you in a better spot for the issue?
Sure. I received a phone call today, yes.
Okay, so you're in a better spot than you were this morning?
Yes, I was able to speak with someone today, but going forward, I mean, if I have to call tomorrow with a follow-up question, who's going to answer my question? Who's going to answer the phone? Who's going to check the voicemails?
Well, I can think in my head what the answer is, but I don't have...
Right, and the answer shouldn't be...
The authority is one.
Right.
So, I think it will get taken care of, and you know, hopefully we can solve your...
That's all I can hope for.
Your problem.
Excellent. No, and it's not my problem, like I said, I'm sure this has happened to other people who are frustrated and just not as vocal as me. So, I thank you all for your time, and Jen, I'm sure it's in capable hands, and I appreciate it.
I really appreciate that, too. I'll get you a call and let you know.
Thank you.
Let's move forward to correspondence.
Sure, just very quickly, in your packet, you'll see a correspondence, I was asked to reach out to an anonymous donor that had given us quite a gift to the animal control officer, I did not have that person's last name, but had an email. As you can see, she was really appreciative of the fact that the selectmen had sent that correspondence, and I wanted to let you know that. There's also a letter of support that I had written and was asked to write, relative to the Blackstone Valley Chamber of Commerce's grant application for the redo, which is a regional effort for actually seeking funding to work with smaller towns in the Blackstone Valley, so you'll see that in the packet. And finally, I concluded correspondence on an issue that you apparently have taken up in the past. Mr. Warren, George Warren from Northbridge, has been a strong advocate for wanting to make the State's Liberty Bell replica accessible to the public, in particular, more in the State House area where it could be viewed. As you can see, he's gone off to a lot of communities, this town actually put together a letter of support, and I only bring it up because he stopped by and hand-delivered his packet, which I give him a lot of credit for, and in it, you'll see there was an article on August 19th, that basically, in that article, you'll see that they are saying there's no immediate action that will be taken on the Liberty Bell relocation, so I think he wanted you to know that, and I wanted you to know.
This board voted on supporting that in early April, and apparently, since that time, there are 10 other communities that are also supporting that initiative.
I think you'll be continuing to push forward.
Yep.
And that would complete the correspondence. Mr. Chairman.
New business, Legion Project Manager.
It's Mr.?
Les Davis. Mr. Davis has presented an outline, and the position was recommended by the Municipal Building Committee, and I've reviewed the outline, basically, the critical portion, that's the first paragraph, but I'm amenable to approving that, or supporting that description of the scope, and that we move forward on this.
This was, this went by our town council?
No, this is actually something that Les had produced for us, and I think he was using it as a guideline, because this is a position that would be appointed by the board as an interim position, I think, you know, he was actually almost unanimously volunteered by the Municipal Building Relocation Committee, and with no objection from me, because I know that I would work with him quite well, but it was to try to assure that we had someone other than the town administrator in not having an entire committee having to be vested in trying to make this project go forward. And there's a number of things that, the responsibilities of this, we know that Les has done a lot of work in school building construction and things of that nature, this kind of project with the things that need to be done for the region post to convert it are nowhere near that scope of immensity for a project, but nevertheless, it is good to have someone who can be there and help make quick decisions and have a direct report. And so I think that was one of the things Les had said to me, regardless of whether you adopt the entire description, it was more as a way of trying to engage you, to say, what would you like him to do? I'm not going to speak for him, because he'll be able to speak, but he also spoke to me about what he would like to do, and what he doesn't want to do in this position, and I would open it up for him to be able to tell you that.
Mr. Davis, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, town administrator.
I put together that, if you want to call it a job description, do these responsibilities, that came from positions that I've held throughout the 28 years that I've been up here and working for towns and communities all over the state of Massachusetts, in renovating, building brand-new buildings and schools for them. And it just lists out a number of responsibilities that I would normally do as a town representative or clerk of the works, or project representative, or project manager. Okay? And it was trying to enlighten you as to how I would be looking at this project, even though it's a, we want to call it a small project, it's a fast-track project, and it takes just as much work, and it takes as much detail to get that done as it does to build a brand-new building, because there's a lot going into it. I wanted also, Jerry Finn has most graciously volunteered his services to be my assistant. Most of you know Jerry, he's a man, a very detailed individual, good thinker, knowledgeable, and I welcomed his volunteering to help me out. I couldn't think of anybody better to have helping me than Jerry. As I said to town administrator, I think we do have to set some ground rules if this position is approved. I don't intend to work for 20 different people. I don't intend to take orders from 20 different people. to take orders from 20 different people. I don't intend to have 20 people telling me our Monday morning quarterbacking, things that we've done. As you well know, John, you're in the business also, you have to make decisions and you have to make them quickly. And I don't have a problem doing that. And I don't have a problem at a later date saying, it was a decision needed to be made, I made it, we're moving on. If you dislike it, if you don't like it, I don't, that's, I respect that, but we're moving on. I think that we need to set out some ground rules as to how we're going to pay for things, because there's things that's going to be, jump up, that we're going to have to pay for out of pocket. I don't know whether you want to authorize me to approve things up to a certain amount, be it $100, $300, $100. And then you want to approve, the town administrator to approve a higher amount up to a certain level, and then after that, it has to come to you as a board. That has to be worked out, because we're going to have to do it. I do know that there have been talks about a lot of material being donated to this project free of charge. Also, a lot of labor is being donated to this project free of charge. My intention, though, is to talk to each and every one of them who, I don't care if they're donating material, I don't care if they are donating material and labor. I want to know exactly what they're doing. I want to know exactly what they're supplying before we let them on the project. I don't want them to come in and do one thing, we thinking they're doing something else, and then it not be, end up costing us more to fix it. So I intend to do that, as far as I'm concerned. Nobody comes on that project to do any work unless I've talked to them first, along with Jerry and along with the town administrator. Okay, what are you supplying? And I want a list of what they're supplying, because we want to put figures with this. I want to be able to tell the townspeople, it would have cost us $25,000 if we had to go out and buy this material and we got it for free. And that's a hypothetical figure, as you're well aware of. But I want to be able to do that. I want to be able to put that into our spreadsheet and show the townspeople how much money we've saved them. And then I want to know exactly what we're going to have to pay for also. So we can come to you ahead of time and say, this is not being supplied voluntarily, this work is not being done voluntarily, we have to pay for this, and here are three different bids. And you can prove which one you want. Irrespective, we all know we're going to have to do the building, we're going to have to move our people into it. And it's going to be a fast-track project, because here we are on November, October the 17th. By December 1st, we need to have our people out of that garage, even before then, and I think the town administrator's working on that, but we need to have them up in a location. We need to address the things that the previous speaker came up and complained about. I had suggested that once we start, we outline and we dictate to every board, every committee, where they're going to hold their meetings at. And we have the elementary school, we have the senior center, we have the library, and we also have St. Augustine's Hall up there. So I think within those three that are four places, we can assign a board and a committee, a designated place, you will hold your meetings here. So that way, everybody knows, we can put that, post it out, saying, this is where they're going to be meeting at from now on. So, other than that, I think it's in a nutshell.
In all due respect, that's just a little bit beyond what we need to establish now. But critically vital that you all get involved right at this point. With regard to the mechanics, the financial mechanics, we're presently in the process of working that out with account numbers and funding sources and that kind of thing, and we'll be discussing that a little bit later this evening. And that will be forthcoming for the special town meeting as well. With regard to your involvement at this point, it's critical that we get the finance committee adjourned quickly, and basically to approve using a reserve fund or a reserve fund transfer. Financially, that's the starting point, but we'll be working that out this evening.
I understand that, Mr. Chairman, but also, we, our town meeting is in November now, and we're going to start working here in that building up there even before then if this is approved. If you approve this, I am to set up a meeting with Jennifer tomorrow.
Yeah, there's a mechanism presently set up with accounting. Town administrator's worked with a past accountant in Justin up in Oxbridge, so that we have a means and an account number we can be using at this time.
Reserve fund transfer.
That's fine.
Just start, and then swear everything away in a special town meeting. Yeah, we wanted to at least get you on board. We put you earlier in the agenda, but that is a preliminary budget strategy that I'm going to be presenting, and the chairman is correct, so that we can access and work with the finance board before town meeting, and then be able to have the ability to get work done while we're waiting for that town meeting. But we'll be discussing that part of it, but you're right on the money. We do need to, pardon the expression, right on the money, because it will come down to that, you know?
Okay.
I would ask the board, is there any discussion on this outline responsibility?
I think the first step, Mr. Chairman, is we have to appoint the people first before we move anywhere.
Well, that's basically what I'm saying, but we'll be appointing to this document. This is the scope of the responsibility of that appointment.
Yeah, well, I'd have to look this over before I do that, because there's things that, first thing I would do is appoint, make a motion to appoint Les as the project manager and Jerry Finn as the assistant. That would be the first thing I'd do, and that's my motion.
Okay. Do I hear a second on that?
A second.
Any discussion?
So are you asking, hold this?
No, what I need to do is I have some questions, and I have to know what platforms and what state we're going to do different things before I even consider this. Some of it you already answered. Les knows that I'm in the business, too, okay? And for the best interest of the people of Millville, I have to make sure that I'm comfortable. Not that I wouldn't be with Les and Jerry, but I still have to ask the question.
So my question is, is your vote was to appoint them, but without a description? So not approving this? So that my concern would be, we're approving a position with no guidelines.
Well, here's, okay, let me put it to you this way. I made a motion on the floor to have these two gentlemen here as the director and the assistant director of...
The project.
This. This is what I'd like to do right now, okay? And then I'm going to make another motion as soon as I ask a couple of questions, if you don't mind. I'd like to do it in two steps.
Okay.
All right?
Okay, so in principle, right now, we're voting on positions.
That's correct.
So all in favor?
Aye.
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 My next question is, Les, you thought, and Jerry, I know you're through the same way, and I agree with you 100%. You can't have too many people with their fingers in the pocket, because you wouldn't get anything accomplished. It'd be too much pickering going back and forth. The only thing I have to say about the whole thing is that if we're going to move forward with this, there would be one board that's in charge of this whole thing, the Board of Selectment and the town administrator, with no interference from anybody else. They have to either go through the board or the town administrator, and not bother you gentlemen at all. If they have questions or they don't like something this and that, it's got to come in front of the board. We can't have any interruption, because like you said, Les, more than once, it's a fast track, and you can't have disturbance in that. And I agree. With the money and this and that, we'd have to lay out some guidelines. I would like to know, like you said, it's a very good point. There's been a lot of talk about, I'm going to give you this, and I'm going to give you that on free labor, I'm going to give you that on free. I don't see anything in paper or anything like that. I understand that. That's something that you're going to have to figure out, like you said. So you know where you stand and where you can go and what you need and this and that. On buying stuff and this and that, I would like to be, the board, to be involved on certain things, on what you're buying on a big-ticket item, even a small ticket item over anything, I think, anything under $500, I'm not too worried, but anything over $500, I want to know about it. Okay? It might just be a quick phone call to say this is what we're going to do. I think the board can say, okay, we're going to put on hold, we need to discuss it, or whatever. But the one thing I don't want to do is I don't want to hold anything up between the two of you guys. I want to make sure that you guys have a free range with no interference. And that's what you're looking for, that's the two of you looking for, correct?
Yeah, absolutely. You're right, Mr. Lawrence. I mean, I agree, the Board of Selectment is in charge of this project. It all comes down to you. You're the approving authority and whatnot. All I'm saying is I'm going to take direction from one person, it's going to be that man right there, and, you know, he works with you. But I don't want five people coming to me and saying, like you said, why don't we do it this way, why don't we do it that way? I'm going to look to him to work with you. You understand what I'm saying?
Well, that gentleman right there, he's equal to all of us.
That's right, you know. But he's keeping you informed on everything, too. I'll keep you informed on a weekly basis, or every time I'll come to every one of your meetings and brief you exactly where we stand at. I would just say, as a liaison between Jerry, myself, and the Board of Selectment, I would like to have it be one person that I deal with, is the chairman of the Board of Selectment. I'm going to be dealing with the town administrator every day. That's what I'm saying, and I think you agree with that.
Basically, basically, Mr. Davis is saying, and what you're concerned, John, is that that's all stated right in paragraph 1.1.
As far as the finances, all that money, you guys work that out between, you know, yourself. I don't care how it comes out, because I have to come to you for everything, for purchasing. Fine, I don't mind doing that, you know? I don't mind doing that at all either. I tell them, they're straight in a minute, hey, we need to buy this, go get permission.
So what we can do is we can give, I'm just throwing hypothetical numbers, because I know nothing about construction.
Right.
Okay? So we could say Les has, Les and Jerry have permission to spend, $500 doesn't have to come to us, but $1,000, he may have to come to the town administrator to get that approval. And then anything beyond that would be come back to our board.
My only problem with that is every time he went there for $1,000 in one week, they could spend $5,000. I have a problem with that. I want to know about it, because that starts adding up real quick. If he went four days in a row and says, I need $1,000, $1,500, $1,000 because of certain things, I think this board's going to want to know about it.
That's a valid point.
Why don't we do this? Why don't, as we move along, each week, we provide you with a list of things that have been purchased, and the dollar amount. And it can be under whatever monetary value you want to settle it. But each week, every Monday morning, we submit it to the town administrator, she puts it in your boxes, and you have it.
This is going to be on one particular account, like a 192, is it?
Yeah.
Line item. But what we also need to see on this side is the status of that account on perhaps a weekly basis.
We can do an Excel spreadsheet on that very easily.
Well, no, I don't even think we have to do that. I think, we are going to bring this up about the budget part, but by working with the town accountant and setting up a separate fund, we can track all of that and provide that. And that's one of the recommendations coming, is not to just envelop it under an existing account without having some transparency to it, so that we can do that. So to take off, you know, every time, you have to have an invoice, and the invoice has to be processed by the town accountant, and the town accountant has to log it and then report it back. So we can do that, and we can track that. So that would, you know, along with the fact that we would be keeping a running total of that, so we can supply that. I mean, that's one of my objectives financially with the board, anyway. And we've already started to have those recommendations come from the financial team.
How you work that out is up to you.
Right, I know, it just came up, and I feel, you know, I know we're getting ahead of ourselves, but I think I'll have to make sure with the board, we give that part of it out.
And I do agree that it needs the attention of one person making those decisions, who's well-informed and equipped to do so. So I get that, and I know Millville, and I know all the good intentions of all of the people who want to help, but it can be burdensome when you have different people telling you to do different things. And I think being clear-cut to say, this is who's answering to who and who's responsible for what, and putting it out there so that the project is done, especially, you know, when you talk about the donations and labor, I mean, do we want, yes, thank you for the donation, but are we going to have to replace it in five years because the quality may not be something that you would want inside the building? So I think those are things that we need to monitor, and we need someone to do so on a daily basis and in the moment. So I don't have a problem with that. I don't know what the numbers are. I don't know what that financial number looks like, because I don't know the cost of things. And I'm not going to make believe I do know. And I'm sure that you have done this, and John has done this, so I don't know where we start with those numbers. So I guess I'm looking for some guidance in that area.
I think, between what we're going to do is, after I sit down with the town administrator is, we're going to make out a list of everything that has to be done. And also, again, going back and finding out how much material is going to be donated, how much labor is going to be donated. Once we find out, once I find out where we stand at as far as donations for material and labor, then I will see where we stand at with things that haven't been provided. And those are the things we'll look into, and we will start developing numbers for those. We need to transfer the telephones up to, all the telephone systems up to the Legion. How much is that going to cost us? Mr. Verizon, I'm going to call them up. Mr. Verizon, how much is it going to cost us to do all this? Are you going to charge us for it, whatever the case may be, you know? Do we have to put in, God knows what, cables? Is Charter Cable going to do it free, or are they going to charge us? We'll find that number out. We'll say, what is that number? I want to know that number as soon as I can, because we have to develop a budget for that. We're going to have to say, this is where we are, this is where we need to be, and we're missing this much. And this is what it's going to cost us.
You need a spec going in, though, to ask this question.
Pretty much. And we have to develop that on an ongoing basis. John would realize, you walk in there one day, and to give you an example, we were putting up a school building, and they were running all the telephone lines in the building, and the cable lines in the building. And we got all ready to have the inspectors come down and inspect the building and the elevator and all that. They got there and they said, you can't call out on the elevator on emergency line. Well, why not? They forgot to put in, the architect fought to draw in the drop for the telephone line, and nobody assigned the responsibility of the elevator company connecting to that drop. So there we sat. Now, everybody said, not my problem. Those are the things I want to find out before it happens.
So you plan on being there every day?
As much as possible. Maybe in the evening, too.
I'm sure Mosh is happy. No, I think you're both perfect for this. You've got the background, the attention to detail, the, you know, dedication for it, being on the initial building piece of it. So I don't have a problem with it, and I think it's good practice.
Mr. Lawrence, you have any other questions?
So are we setting those numbers later?
Oh, yeah. I mean, it's too premature. I mean, part of it is, tonight, we're actually going to ink a license, which allows us to really get into the building before. A lot of the estimates that I was asked to try to do for the Municipal Building Relocation Committee was really trying to get the best kinds of information so that they could forward a decision to this board. And now, if we consummate agreement tonight, it allows us to actually perceive and develop and devote as much attention as this project needs. Because right now, it's been, you know, balancing that out with a number of locations. Now, our energy and focus will be specifically on this. And that's why you have a couple of things later on in your packet that, you know, are looking at how to develop that budget so that there'll be... looking at how to develop that budget, so that they'll be able to work along with myself to actually start to execute more vigorously, the things that need to be done, even before town meeting.
Joe, do you want a motion on this?
Yes.
Can I make a motion, have the service provide and the duties responsible for Les, Dave, Les Davis and Jerry Finn as the manager and assistant manager, as red?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Hey, Mr. Finn, have something to email, what to say?
I'm just, thank you for that, John, we appreciate it. I, I'm excited to get going on this, I've been wanting to get a go for it for a couple of weeks. And I, I think the fun part of this is going to be that, for now, careful, I'm going to learn something. And at the same timeframe, we've got to really put together the tactical elements, so we understand where we're at, and then start to put a plan together so we can present to you with some logic. And then from that logic, be able to use your experience with Les to be able to say, A, has to happen, then B, then C, and so forth. And then we will figure out the finances as we go along with that, and be able to come up with a budget with Jen's help. So, I'm looking forward to get this started, and we need to move on this, it's a quick step, because we've got some folks that it's getting cool and cold all the time, and we've got to keep moving. So, I'm glad that you suggested go forward.
So we're saying, you're going to have a list for us tomorrow?
Well, we probably have some of that list already worked on, to be frank.
There's a lot of, a lot of that list has been done.
We've got a list sitting all over the place, John, it's a matter of now, we've got someone dedicated to understand how, I don't, I built, I used to build treehouses, that's as far as I went. I need his help to say, you got to do A, B, and C, to all that stuff.
In all this, keep one thing in mind, we learned a critical lesson this evening with the floor of the EOC.
Yeah.
And that was recently done, fairly recently done, not too long ago.
And I also wanted to bring attention to the board, is that we've had our building inspectors and our wiring inspector, you know, also look at this building. And so, that they're quite vested in wanting to make sure that it's done, you know, any kind of repairs and renovation are done in the right way. So, they're on board, and they have actually looked at it to help define some of those respective jobs that need to be done for it to pass those inspections. So, we know that that, that part of it has already been a lot of time and energy in the assessment portion, and what needs to be done has already been done by those guys, too.
Could you, Madam Administrator, set us time, today's Monday, Tuesday, tomorrow I'll have a doctor's appointment I have to go to, but Wednesday, can you set us some time for Jerry and I?
Sure.
I'm always available.
Set us time for, so we can sit down and...
I'll email you a time that looks good on calendar for me.
That would be great.
Rather than this morning or afternoon.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Late in the afternoon.
Yeah, I know, me, too.
License agreements.
Mr. Chairman, I think we could call up the Commander for the Legion Post, and I think I would let you and Mr. Laura kind of take the lead. If in front of you, you will see, there is a document, we had talked with Town Council about how could we proceed to make necessary changes in a building that we were going to retrofit to become our future hub of municipal operations. And so the license agreement that's before you is one that also has been shared and, with the Legion Post's leadership, and there were several crucial areas, I don't know if you want to go into those, but you'll see there are really four main areas, other than some of the pro forma things. The first one has to do with the site preparation, and the purpose, and the term of being able to go into the Legion Post. This is an interim solution for us to be able to go into with the long-term vision of us being able to execute a lease after town meeting for a much longer duration. So the first part, under Paragraph 1, you'll see it has to do with use site and preparation, it basically allows us to go in, to have keys to the, the building, and also for the Legion Post membership or leadership to also have the right to access the building as well while the construction is going on. And we hope to actually work in concert with them as well, in trying to make sure that what kinds of things that we do will meet their future approval as well. Number 2, or Paragraph 2, you'll see, has to do with consideration of utilities, and the consideration of what a license fee would be. I don't know if you want to speak to the, the negotiation that took place, that resulted in what I consider to be a very reasonable, straightforward, per month fee of $150 per month while we're executing the repairs, and then with a increase to that if it were to go on longer than three months. The utilities, of course, would be covered by the town, and some of these other things that I think were in there. Again, we, the third piece of it that was important to the town, of course, was insurance. And the Legion Post had really stepped up to the plate, made sure that they had both personal liability and building insurance. And of course, we're going to do a mutual, we already have our coverage, but we're going to actually make sure that we're added on to each of our policies, so that everybody, whether it would be students, or, or a corporate person who's going in to do work on the building as an in-kind donation, or whether it's, we know that anybody going in who's a regular business has to show the town they have life, insurance coverage anyway. So, it's really quite simple and straightforward, that's the meat of it, and I don't want to...
Tom, Tom Consul has been through this, the, this is all, this has all been negotiated, and I imagine, assume, you're all in agreement with it?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we had our meeting this past Sunday, and it was unanimous vote to accept the license agreement with the town, and everyone was in agreement with the terms and the language of the agreement. We look forward to working with the town, and, you know, being able to provide the town with a suitable place to hold town business. Because obviously where we're at now is not, not working.
To Mr. Laura, initially, when we had our first negotiate session, that first three months was at a dollar a month, but the Legion's in a bit of a jam with an insurance policy issue, and we, we agreed to $150 a month, and that's why the increase in the agreement. And other, other than that, I, I, I'm satisfied with the balance of the agreement, and I would intend a motion, if there are no objections, that we can make a motion to sign.
I make a motion to assign the license agreement for the American Legion at 290 Main Street in Millville, as red.
First, Laura.
Second.
Row?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
With that, Mr. Chairman, I'll present you with our signed copy of the agreement.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We'll sign this evening.
Thank you very much for all your help.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Couldn't have done it without the board.
Thank you very much.
Well, happy to work with you.
Thank you.
The only thing that we didn't like, and I got to say this to Jeff Wayne, because he's not here, that when the government come up...
Could you come forward, because they won't see you? Come on!
I'm, I'm...
You've done this before.
My name's Gary Shay, I'm from Millville by Little Franklin, and I've been with you for many, many years. But when the government come up, when the B.B. students were there and everything else, and they put the article in the paper, they said that you guys are going to get a bill that's not being used. That's not true. We use that, we have our meetings there. So we're not just giving a bill that's falling, we put a lot of money into that bill. You know, we put a lot of work and time into the people, membership, you know? I just want to let you know, anybody know that the bill is not sitting there falling apart, you got to take. We're giving you, you know, at least you know the bill, because we want to help the town, but I just want to make sure the town knows that we, that bill is not, we were using the bill.
We understand that.
Now, you guys do, but the paper didn't.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was in the paper, you know?
Yeah.
That town's going to get a vacant bill there. Well, it's not vacant, you know? It's not being vacant.
I think the reporter probably walking into the hall area, where, you know, it was the, the painting supplies were set up, I think she interpreted that as vacant, because there was nothing in there, but that was an erroneous thing, and...
I just had to say this to Jeff, because it bothered me.
We appreciated that, yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
I know, reporters don't always accurately capture those things.
Oh, I know that.
But thank you for telling us that.
You're welcome. I know a lot about reporters.
Yes. So this will go on the...
Yes, I'll put it on the, yeah, yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Thanks.
Election warrant.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, before you, and it's because we don't have another regular scheduled meeting, the Town Clerk has asked me to place before you the warrant for the upcoming presidential or state presidential election. This evening, I need you to approve the state election warrant for November 8th, 2016, and also sign all, I think there's eight copies at the end of the meeting.
I just have one question, question mark?
This, I don't know, this comes from the state, so do you approve of the law somewhere? I've thought of it before. Okay, question mark, is that, that is...
Is that the right date?
Oh, oh, you, no, no, this is a law, yes, I think it, the law, it's an initiative petition, and I think they're referencing when that initiative petition had not taken a vote in the House or Senate, so I do think that's correct. But it's referencing something that was in act, inaction done by the legislature, and that's why they're doing the initiative petition. Sorry.
So I'll hear a motion to approve the warrant you've submitted?
Otherwise, we got to take it up with the Secretary of State's office, because they're the ones who wrote it, right? Not the Town Clerk.
Make a motion to accept the warrant for the, the November 8th elections.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sure.
Town Hall, okay.
In your packets, to begin with, since we're talking about a town meeting that you've already voted to put in on November 30th, what I wanted to do is to walk you back with a calendar, so that we would know what we had to actually do, and make sure that we weren't missing dates. I could sit down with our Town Clerk, and I've outlined a proposed schedule of key dates to comply with any necessary meeting milestones required prior to the special town meeting, which is slated for November 30th. Obviously, coming back with November 30th, Wednesday, would be the town meeting set for 7:00 P.M. The first thing that we'd have to make sure that we were doing was posting the warrant, the actual warrant, which would have to be 14 days before the town meeting. So, the date that we had looked at was November 16th, and the rationale for that is, if you back yourself into the Board of Selectmen meeting to approve and sign that warrant, you'd have to convene before the clerk and the constable could actually post it on the 16th. So I give you November 14th or 15th, which is a Monday or Tuesday, for the ability to meet, so that you can approve and sign the warrant. And before that, we have to have a FinCom public hearing about the upcoming town meeting. And I thought that the best day to do that would have been November 9th, because we're talking about a quick schedule. Having said that, November 2nd, they would have to actually have their meeting posted, because that is another milestone they have to have in seven days posted prior to a hearing. So, you have two regular board meetings on the November 7th and the 21st, that's why I did not put, initially, we had the FinCom hearing of being able to do it on the 7th of November, but that would preclude any of the board members attending it, and I didn't think that was good. So, we changed it to November 9th for the FinCom hearing, and you keep your regular Board of Selectmen meeting on the 7th. So I, I don't know if you want to take a look at your calendars and see whether you feel that you could actually have a secondary meeting to vote to approve the warrant.
I think we opened the warrant, but we didn't give a closing date. So, should we have, this is, should we have our closing date on the 7th, and then approve of it? You don't have a special meeting just to go over it? Or do you want to vote on that night? Because it's saying that FinCom has to have their hearing, and it says November 2nd, but I think you really mean November...
No, it has to be posted. They have to, that would, we have to have their, FinCom has to have their meeting, or their hearing posted, their actual hearing would be on November 9th.
We wouldn't want to...
That's three weeks before.
We wouldn't want to close the warrant on the 7th.
Right.
No.
No.
Or the 3rd, do you know what I mean? So that it's ready on the, the 7th. I, I, I'm confused with the, the FinCom piece of it.
Well, it's just that we, we have to make sure that they have their seven days, so I'm just telling you that if we were to look at making sure that you had all the articles that you thought were important, I was trying to just give an option that if they have a seven-day advance, that they have to post their meeting, we were trying to do it in a sequential way. So, even though their meeting would be November 9th, we're just saying, I mean, again, I have to run this by them, but...
No, I, I think you...
I'm sorry.
That's fine. I think you might be confusing the posting of the actual warrant and the actual meeting. So FinCom meets seven days prior to the meeting, so, make believe Thanksgiving's not in there, they would probably meet the 23rd, typically, if it was, you know, a normal, they, they meet one week prior to. So they meet in between the posting of the, the warrant and the actual...
The clerk said to me that on that was the seven days prior to, no, seven days prior to their hearing, but you're asking to have that hearing moved closer before the...
That's, that's required. They, they meet in between us posting the warrant and holding the meeting. They meet in that timeframe.
Okay.
So I think that just might be a confusion on how they're reading it.
Yeah.
So...
Okay, so...
But they'll walk you through.
And what we'll be looking for is a reserve fund transfer.
But we too, also...
Yeah, that's, that, what I was going to say is, that, that is a recommendation separately, this is the, the town meeting warrant would not have the reserve transfer, that would be a sec, a separate meeting that would go just with the Finance Committee, and could be as early as next week, depending on what you guys decide. But that would be something that would be done not in conjunction with the town meeting. The town meeting warrant article would talk about replenishing the reserve transfer that would be made. So, an article would be on the warrant for town meeting that would relate directly to transferring a sum of money if we so do move it, and have the Finance Board move it out of the reserve fund, but to replenish it. So two, two separate things, but the seven, seven days prior to the, I see what you're saying, she, she gave me that date, I think is on...
Yeah, no, it's, yeah, it's off, but that's okay.
Yeah, that's the only part that's off, I think.
So, I know we have to give a closing date, because we're not going to be only dealing, hopefully, we're only dealing with the, the Town Hall, but it is a time in which, that we have to do unpaid bills, we have to do any department, sometimes they'll put in a...
Right.
An article, so we do have to address other issues.
Right, and we do have one.
So, would it be, I think with, you know, the date, we're on the 17th, to say that we are going to close it on November, November 3rd? That way it can be in our packet on November 7th as a topic. Whether we approve of it that night, whether we ask for a second meeting, so that we can get it posted by the 16th, that gives us a week and two days...
Yeah, to do it.
To get that done, so...
Okay.
Does that sound? So I'm going to make a motion that we close the special town meeting warrant at the close of business on November 3rd.
I'll second that.
On favor?
Aye.
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 And then maybe we can put it on the agenda for the 7th, because we do tend to send the articles over to Town Council to, you know, make appro, changes as needed.
Good call.
And then we'll, that will give us a week and two days to, actually, no, less, a little less than that, a week and a day to finalize, sign, and post that, the 14 days prior.
Okay. And then I will work with her on actually scheduling, well, work with the, the hopefully new Chairman of the Finance Committee, because they'll hopefully meet with their addition to reorganize in advance of that, and then they'll can schedule...
Yeah.
Seven days before.
And especially with Thanksgiving, I don't foresee them meeting that Wednesday, and they might want to do it the week prior, you know? So that's, that's at their discretion. But I think we should give them enough time to do so.
Right, because of the...
With the holiday in there.
Okay. All right, so I'll confer with both the Clerk and the Finance Committee to make sure they have that, and I'll revise that, so that we'll have it ready. they have that, and I'll revise that, so that we'll have it ready for the close on the 3rd, and ready for the Board of Selectmen's schedule on the 7th. Chairman, the next on the Town Administrator update you had, we had listed the Congressman McGovern's visit, I didn't know if you wanted to speak to that as well. We did have the Congressman, who has reached out to our town a number of times since we had lost the town hall, expressing an interest to come and visit. I know that he came last Thursday, and he met with, just from an administrative perspective, he met with staff to talk about the current conditions, and also the hopes of what we were trying to achieve, and then continued his visit after meeting with a number of department heads and yourself. Then continued to look at the Legion Hall, and there were Valley Tech students that were there, and the Commander and the members of the Post were there, and I know that overall it was a very positive visit, and he has expressed a number of things he's going to do with the town as well, in trying to reconvene a multi...
Task force.
Yeah, multi-specialized task force at state and federal levels, to look at any possible places that we may be able to try to access funding. He also had expressed not only willingness, but I know he's already started to reach out about the bond issue, that we have 800,000 in a state bond appropriation long before this problem happened, and I know he's been in touch with the Secretary of Economic Development to, to look into that, as well as to advocate for accessing some immediate funding, and is working on that. So, you know, I think that we have somebody who is really willing and trying to help us. This is also, in addition to this board negotiating and, and working hard to put the town's position forward for insurance coverage, that now, we've had two reports that have come in, I think it's time for us to now sit down with the insurance company to, to start to negotiate those kinds of details, but in absence of that, we need to explore every aspect of that, and I think the governor is one of those ways that we're trying to do that.
The Congressman was very much impressed with the word for the students from PBT, and they kind of, they were impressed with the Congressman as well, for his interest in your...
Well, you know, he was here on May 1st and walked, walked the parade path with our, along with yourself, and so that was, you know, good that we weren't forgotten then, and we were not forgetting now.
No, and he was quite genuine, he listened to, you know, to all the bumps and, and bruises that we felt along the way, and I think was very empathetic about that. There is a, in your packet, there is a, an article, and that's the article that we had heard about earlier, that may not have gotten everything accurate, but hopefully, hopefully going forward, that reporter will be mindful of that, and I'm sure...
This will be bedtime reading for you.
Bedtime reading for you. But all in all, we are going to convene another meeting, and we'll be with additional people. This is aside from everything else that's being done, because we have to think about the future, not only in the next spot that we're going to be in, but the overall town hall, and what gets done with that building going forward. The next aspect of the Town Administrator update, you'll see a memorandum that has been sent to you, and also to our town accountant. This board had asked to, and had actually voted to set up a separate type of account to be able to accept donations that could be possibly coming for the improvements and repairs and future construction of buildings, not only with regards to the Legion, which could eventually be used for municipal operations. So in talking with our town accountant, I had requested that a new line item be established, because your authorization had directed me to do so, which could be interpreted as to receive or expend funds from, which might be used for immediate or future building improvements. What I learned, of course, is that through our accountant, that that particular gift and donations account should be broad enough, so that it does not just apply to the Legion Post, but could apply to a future building and/or needs that we would have. And so, having said that, it would be, for, the scope of the line item would be for any gift or donations to be used for the purpose of repairing, maintaining, purchasing, or constructing a space for municipal business operations in the town of Millville. The town accountant said, the only other thing that you really should do, other than the fact that you voted to establish this, is to actually vote to say that, that you will be willing to accept any funding or monetary donations for this purpose, for the scope of the purpose, as opposed to just saying any donations for municipal building repairs. So if someone were to read that, it would allow that any donation comes in, you don't have to do it each and every time, you would be accepting it in advance.
I would make that motion.
And this came through the town accountant?
Yes, that's verbiage directly...
Because I know there's, you can't specifically, as a town employee, go out and ask...
Right.
Right.
For it, because we, when we did the centennial, we had to, we were exclusionary to that because of the whatever, but, so it's what comes in, not us actively asking.
Right, right. It just means that you are willing to accept what comes in.
Accept it.
Or to receive, that might be a better word, not to accept, but to receive.
So...
Favor?
Aye.
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 The next item on the Town Administrator's update is about an interim operations plan. As you know, that we both had set out as a board and as an administration, to try to look at not just one building, but potentially two buildings, to come up with an interim plan of where we would put employees while the Legion Hall is being retrofitted and undergoing repairs and improvements. Initially, we were hoping, even with the relocation committee, that a lot of those decisions might have been made a little bit earlier. I do know that when we considered the Chestnut Hill Meeting House, a lot of it started out with plans of trying to do this as quickly as possible, and maybe a lot earlier in the summer season. Having said that, one of the things that I sat down with the police chief, because I know your negotiations had not yet been consummated at that time, I started to get concerned with the cold weather advancing, what other kind of contingency plan could we have? And I've met with the staff, and I've met with the chief, and one of the things that has surfaced is that because we're talking about a much smaller window to have to worry about, you know, where we would go, there is the possibility of being able to take more space. The chief is the one who really came up with this idea, was willing to share it with us. It would allow all of us to get out of the garage and actually in the building, and the operations of how it would actually flow would actually work out better, because people would still be coming to the police department for business, and would come in through the main door, and everybody would be in the building and have an area in which they could work, and not have to worry about weather. Knowing that this is for a short period of time, but not wanting to make that decision on behalf of the staff, I did share it with the staff, and everybody was pretty unanimous in understanding that they would prefer not to move more than one time the next time, that they feel that it would actually probably work out operationally better to have that extra space, and that in comparison to where we might have had to do a lot of capital outlay, knowing that we have a lot more that we may have to be doing with this next project, that it, from a fiduciary point, it did not necessarily...
Make a lot of sense.
Make a lot of sense to me, as we started to look at potential costs associated with making not one move, but two moves. So, having said that, the contingency for the contingency is, I'm proposing to you that in advance of knowing that we're going to be retrofitting another building, we do have an ability to stay where we're at, improve how we're actually taking care of the employees, and to do it with the blessing of the police chief, and that's important, and we feel that we can do that without being in the way, and we have the ability to do this for not an indefinite period of time, and the chief knows that, but to also save the town money, because there would be substantial costs associated with making not one move to the Legion Post, but two, you know, one to another building, and then to the Legion Post.
I personally spoke with the chief at length on the subject, and I'm confident that he's okay with it, and it wasn't just an empty gesture. So if Town Administrator feels it would work, Chief Landry feels it would work, but...
And the employees have said that to me, too. I mean, that was, initially, when I was in before other committees, and not having this as an option, it was something I was concerned with, and I actually pushed that committee about, you know, I know we're talking about one building to go to, but, you know, I needed at least to explore that with this board, the potential for another site. We've done some of that, and what we're finding out is that, you know, it's opened up some more possibilities for us to develop another plan, so now that I feel that we're really moving in another direction, I think we have some people on board who are going to work really hard, and, and that would be something that I think would be workable for the interim.
So I imagine the motion would be to the effect that we stay at the police station.
I don't think we even have to make a motion.
Yeah. It's nice, I think it, I don't think you have to, but I wanted you to know that, you know, after vetting through a number of different avenues, that that was, that was becoming the preferred option, and it is something I've shared completely with the staff as well, and I have their support for that.
So, you have the select board's support.
Support, okay. I just wanted people to know that that, you know, is going to be what we're going to do, and, and I think it will work for us for the interim, and I appreciate that.
And we'll get Verizon onboard to maybe set up one line and forward all phone calls to a central number...
We can try to do that.
During work hours, at least, and then after work hours, they can go to their voicemail? Put that right on my list.
Yeah, don't worry about it.
I'm sure they'll do it.
It's on my list, too. So that's all right. The final part of the Administrator update, and I apologize, but we had to do this because timing is of essence, was to come up with a preliminary relocation budget strategy, and this is another thing in which I've discussed with a number of people, and sharing it with Les, and I'll put Jerry on as well, that we've worked with both the current accountant and the previous accountant, and I was advised that after reviewing a preliminary budget strategy concerning the capital improvement and anticipated license rental costs associated with the town hall relocation at the Post, it was important that we recognize two things that are challenges for us. One is time, and the other one is transparency. And if we can address those two things in accessing funds for improvements as quickly as possible to begin the work, then we can start the process before, in advance of town meeting, so that we can empower our project manager and his assistant, and myself, to try to get work done. In order to meet them as quickly as possible, to make those improvements, whether they're going to be in kind, labor, or product, I wanted to recommend several things. And the first thing, and this again, is in concert with our financial team, was to really direct the accountant to set up two new line items, and this is in addition to accepting donations, but this is more for our operational budget, and it can be line items that would be under our town hall department. One would be entitled rentals and leases, they feel that, I don't care if it's $150, or in the future, whatever we negotiate with Legion Post for a lease, that that be set up as a separate line item, and that town hall building gifts and donations would also be a separate line item. The town accountant did say, depending on what we did tonight, and you've already approved the lease, I mean, not lease, the license, that we may even set up an actual account that really says Legion Post operations, and that is because, not so much for the interim, we could put it under a town hall account as a separate entity if we do what we are making a recommendation for to do with the Finance Committee in terms of a transfer, but it's not so much for the interim, in the immediate response, it's for 10 years out, or 12 years out, when someone looks back, rather than saying you've had an infusion in your town hall operations budget, you want to be able to say, this was the Legion operations budget, and keep it separate. So if the town accountant, which has already been directed to try to set those up, that doesn't need your approval, the next step would be to convene the Finance Committee, and I'm making the suggestion to do that as early as the week of October 24th, which would...
Next week.
Right, exactly. That's why I know, that's why it's backing us up into a schedule.
I have a question.
Sure, go ahead.
Why are you calling it Legion? Why don't we change that to Millville Operations Center? Why are you putting Legion in it? Because it's not, it's...
Well, we can change whatever the verbiage, just, tonight, we were just actually doing the license with them, so I feel...
So technically, it is still Legion, because you're only in agreement to do construction and upgrades. You wouldn't change the name, I don't think, until you entered into a leasing agreement.
But we wouldn't change the name of the building at all. I think we're looking at it...
I'm not going to use the first line item.
Budgetary lease.
Line item.
We're not looking to change the name.
Gotcha.
Right. And we can work on whatever you feel makes it distinctive. I was taking the, the recommendation from our accountant, that, you know, if you were to, to separate it, it's still for town hall operations, but it's exclusively for the costs associated with that building. And then once you're in the building, you can make a determination for that, but so that everybody will be clear, even going into advance of town meeting, that, you know, I, I think it makes most sense to keep those separate, so that we can track it and identify it. I could still do it under a, under town hall building and repair maintenance, but again, you know, I think...
Temporay, temporay town hall.
It's easy to track.
Yeah. It, I think it's going to be, whatever you want to call it, it's going to be tracked, you know, so I'm taking it by the accountant, who has to put it in, and then make sure that we're doing that part of it. So the next thing after convening the Finance Committee next week, would be to present and request from the Finance Committee to transfer from their line item, the reserve fund appropriations, and I give you the line item of 35,000 to the existing line item, because right now we don't have anything else set up, that we would call it town hall building repairs and maintenance. Again, we can call it, you know, what you feel is most appropriate, but it will be exclusively to set up the budget tracking with the town accountant, for the project manager and the town administrator to account for all those expenses related to those improvements. To implement a best practice, by procurement laws, up to $10,000 if you were to do that, you know, in speaking with them, I think we already know that we're going to be sensitive about what kind of costs we're going to have. I would recommend a more, lower threshold that would tick it off, to ask for at least three verbal estimates for any repair items that were, I would say even over 5,000, but under 10,000, and anything, no, excuse me, that was supposed to be saying under, under 5,000, but three written estimates for any repair items over 5,000, but less than 35,000. Technically, you don't have to do that until you trip the threshold of $10,000, but I'm just sensitive to this issue, and I want to make sure that the board and myself are keeping track of that.
I got a problem with that. You know, I, you want verbal over 5,000, Les, you know as well as I do, a couple of thousand dollars, you get three bids. There's a lot of people out there that will give you, one will come in at five, and one will come in at 25, chop them right in half, so...
Well, this is saying a three bid you would get, for under 5,000.
The state law says 10.
I know the 10, but I think we ought to bring it lower.
Under, so you want three verbal estimates for everything under, I already have it under 5,000?
I'd 2,500.
You want 2,500, okay.
What are you, what's your feeling on that, Les?
It's just getting, yeah.
I get, we get three bids on anything.
Right.
That I thought.
It just, it's just going to be more time, that's all.
You want to work, give me a bid.
Yeah. So, we can make that change, sure. And the other one will trip as the regular, three written estimates. The next thing would be to draft a special town meeting warrant article that would request that the 35,000 that we would take from the reserve fund appropriations be transferred back into the reserve fund appropriation, so that we would replenish that, and then also draft a special town meeting. When we get together, we're going to be looking at a warrant article to request the transfer of funds from stabilization to cover any remaining costs that are being anticipated and associated with the Legion improvements and lease, and that will allow the two things to, to remain separate, but tracked, and that's what I would recommend as a strategy going forward.
Any discussion on that?
Nope. Sounds like a plan.
So the next part is just your signatures, Mr. Chairman. Oh, I don't think I took it out.
Ah, you did take it.
Well, I got that.
It's not there.
Intentional.
Unless I'm, unless I'm-
No, I, when I went over with the-
I don't know, I don't see it.
It wasn't something that was intentional, when the chairman was doing the agenda with me. I don't know.
You can bring it up under new business. Got new business?
All right, this is what I wanted to-
Or old business?
That's why I asked.
I guess it would be old business.
That's why he asked.
A couple of months ago, Millville had a problem with vandalisms going around and stealing our Millville Town Plaque.
Oh, hold on. Highway took them down. Highway.
Why did he take it down?
Because they weren't secure. Because I thought it was stolen, too, and I said something, and then-
It wasn't secure, it was cabled.
No, the base.
Oh, because I just thought it was going to be, it's gone.
No.
Everything's gone this time.
Yeah, I know, I did, too. I was really upset, because I was driving home, and the girls always yell when they see the sign, like it's a big thing coming back to Millville. And so I put something out there, and Brian responded, the highway department responded that the base wasn't secured, and they removed the whole thing, until they could find a proper way. I know, because we had the ones on Lincoln Street stolen, they stole the plaque.
Right, and I went and put cable on that one, I was, right.
And you, and I know you went around and tied all the plaques on, but I think they were, they were concerned about the post, because the post, I shouldn't say this, but the post is actually-
Right.
Worth more than the sign. So, until they can come with a-
Okay, I'm good.
I know, I thought the same thing.
Where'd the sign go?
I thought the same thing.
It's expensive. That was big money.
No, I know.
Okay.
I know. No, they are safe and sound with the highway department.
Never mind.
I don't know.
I meant the one up on 122 did get stolen.
The Oxford side or Blackbridge side?
It was recently stolen.
The post.
Recipitated the action that she put.
Okay.
So, the action then was to go and to-
Reboot the wall.
Get those, take those down and to secure them better, so that you don't end up having everybody steal it. When you put up there, John, it's still there, God, that's a good thing. But evidently, a guy with a big cable cutter could do some damage.
Wow, it was just a deterrent.
No, no, it was just a deterrent. Oh, it, it, insofar as work, but deter the other two that got stolen.
It only keeps the honest people honest, unfortunately.
Yeah. I mean, you gotta be a better winner.
I'm going to use the cable. It's getting late, and we've got a few things to, business to take care of, and we need to move a little bit here. What's going to happen here is that we're going to do signatures, and then we're going to go into executive session.
Only for the purpose to come out to adjourn.
Correct.
Well, yeah. Okay.
Sounds good.
Sign away.
Good night, Les.
Good night, Les, thank you.
Hey, Jen. Can you just get me a copy signed?
Yeah, sure. I'll call you first thing in the morning, I'll have it tonight.
Hey, Jen. So, last week, you guys were talking about something on December 1st, that was, so there's nothing December 1st, the town meeting is-
November 30.
November 30. There's nothing December 1st.
No, no. I think we were thinking about maybe, you know, could have been. That's the license agreement, I'll give that to you for signing. I'm giving you each something assigned, so.
Usually, they don't put the, usually they'll just Joe, Jen, and Mullins.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that was something. My big fan. Some minutes, can I? Jerry, you're happily married, don't talk the boy out of it.
It's time to back out, man.
Yeah. Asking her, not her destination.
Well, she's very, very fortunate, I can understand that. See you guys later.
Yeah.
See you guys later.
Thanks, Jerry.
John, it doesn't make any difference, I know.
Oh, yeah, yeah, probably will, sorry. Because they're going to be breaking everything down, so we're going, you can sit, go sit on the couch out there.
Okay.
It's, it's the next, you know, that's what we do. Very. Hey, Coop.
Nothing.
Hey, Sarge.
How are you?
Nothing.
Is that, I was wondering if that was my copy. How many copies you supposed to have of those?
Four, no, there's like-
Ten?
Eight of them, yeah. Eight or 10 of them, no, eight, I think. One, two, three, four, one, two, three, four, yeah. Did you sign the minutes that you're allowed to?
No.
Here's those.
Did you do a-
Yep, he came over, visited.
John was exiled.
Yeah, I crossed that, the one you-
You're right on top.
I'm on.
The only thing that wasn't done is I signed all these except for a date, on the hand of this day, the 17th.
Well, I'll have you, John, please, when we go back, when we go over there.
Oh, yeah.
Have you just, yes, you don't even want to do this, well, unless you guys want to talk about something.
No, you're kind of technically have to.
Like, because we were talking about the, what do you call it? Chestnut Hill.
Are we going to do both?
Um, it's up to you guys.
Might as well say it, and if we don't, we don't, and if we do, we have it covered.
Yeah, okay, that sounds good.
Yes, we walk for you.
Are we still on? Are we still on?
Yeah, I'm still on, so you guys-
Okay. So, once Joe finishes, I'll make the motion to go into executive session.
Oh, yeah. Are we still on?
Yep. So, everybody in meeting land can enjoy this, but my daughter changed my husband's name on my phone to "My Wonderful Husband."
Your daughter's playing with your phone?
Right, so now I have to say, "Text My Wonderful Husband."
Do you have the mics on?
Every single time, every single time. That's what my daughter did to me.
You can change that.
I know.
But you won't.
But she thinks it's funny. I'll get her when she's a teenager. I don't worry about it.
I'll need to text me, it's Channel 192, looks great, so.
Perfect.
You thought you had eleven left, made one more.
Oh, are these yours?
Yeah, thank you. Yep.
Okay. Joe, are you set signing?
I believe so, I get these three, and then I'll say-
So, I make a motion to enter to executive session under Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, subsection 21, paragraph one and paragraph six, only to adjourn to adjourn, only to exit executive session to adjourn the meeting.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.